All right, welcome. Let's get started. This is the city council meeting 6:00 PM Tuesday, August 22nd. I'd like to acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me in standing for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the beauty of it. We thank you for the opportunity we have to serve this great community that we get to live in. Pray that you'll watch over us tonight. Guide our conversations, decisions, and directions in your name of prayer. Amen.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Thank you. Nicole, roll call?
Councilmember Bogosian.
Here.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
Councilmember Popson is on the phone.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. First item, citizens' comments.
Mr. George Page.
Thank you. I'm George Page. I live at 5 Forest Trail Court One. I'm here representing the VFW Post 3137. First of all, I want to thank you guys for your gracious grants in the past from the ATAX Committee. You have seen, you haven't seen it yet, but we now have a new elevator. It's ADA compliant. It's got a few cosmetic things, but it is working up and running, so hopefully we'll have some sort of ribbon cutting very soon for you guys and get everybody over there and see it. In addition, a few years ago, you gave us the groundwork for our memorial rock guarding and brick engraving. That's been a great addition. I'm here tonight on behalf of the VFW. We've requested an additional $5,000 and ATAX Committee approved it, I believe, back in March. Where our bricks end, a wood walkway begins, and that wood walkway has not been moved or changed since Hugo. Wood does not do well in salt or sand. It's starting to splinter. It's starting to buckle up. It parallels with the wind jammers boards that they have redone. Ours looks terrible, is terrible. It's dangerous, and we're requesting help in replacing that. Total cost is somewhere between 72 and $7,500, and we're asking for you guys to approve a grant of $5,000. Any questions?
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Yep.
Have a great day.
Mr. Al Klaus?
Al Klaus, Three Grand Pavilion, meeting number 20 since 4/13/22 regarding noise ordinance and a nuisance. Requesting for the 14th time to provide us written assurances regarding enforcement of Section 925 BC. Amplified music from the sweetgrass has resulted into a nuisance. Public record. After repeated attempts requesting Mrs. Anderson amend her disclosure letter to the Ethics Commission regarding conflicts disclosing missing material facts, Mrs. Anderson has publicly stated she will not be honoring our request. In the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, I have filed a complaint with the Ethics Commission. We will see where the Ethics Commission aligns with the court of public opinion. Agenda item, Wild Dooms Sound Study. June of '22, we broached sound abatement with the resort's legal counsel, following up with Mrs. Hack on November of '22. Instead of the resort honoring our request, they chose another path, which is a recipe for sound and disaster. Conclusion: The resort's actions clearly demonstrate they're not interested in abating noise, only interested in making more noise. May 22, '18, City Council. The resort told everyone what they wanted to hear. Council approved the sweetgrass inn based on the resort's commitments. Yet look where we are today. Seventy-five DBAs, obnoxious, arrogant, ignorant, disruptive, and a major nuisance. Does anyone realize how ridiculous the 32nd rule is? Public safety, the administration, and the resort have created a science project regarding policing noise violations. Instead of erring on the side of simplicity, the KISS principle, let's make it so complicated, all parties can argue about the mechanics of the noise violation. Will we need AI software? We, the residents, do not find comfort with the administration's quest to prevail at the Supreme Court of South Carolina. Where is everyone's common sense? The sound study is smoke and mirrors, masking the real problem, the resort. Ironically, we are at a time most communities in the country are diligently working to lower noise levels to improve the environment, health, and livability of their citizens. However, on IOP, we have a neighbor who wants to erode the livability standards at the expense of the residents, which commenced in March of '21 and continues to this day. It is not the cicadas. It is not the crows. Thank you.
That's all. Did it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is special presentations. First, we've got a number of new employees. For introductions, Desiree.
Want to come up here?
Do it.
Well, good afternoon. I am filling in for Janice Ladder, HR manager, and it is my pleasure to introduce you to some of our new members in our team. And I will start with the Fire Department. CJ Scott, I think he's on a call. Is he back?
He's back.
He's back? Okay. Bring him over here. CJ grew up in Indiana, and he attended, come next to me. Come over here. He attended the University of Maryland, served in Afghanistan and Iraq from 2009 to 2014 as a firefighter. Thank you for your service. Very impressive. He is coming from the Vance Air Force Base in Oklahoma, and he's a big fan of college football. By college, we have a lot of Clemson.
(inaudible).
Oh, maybe that's not better.
(inaudible).
All right. We won't use that against you. Well, welcome to our team, CJ. All right. Also, we have Jacob Walia from the Fire Department. He is our new and first paramedic that we have hired, so we're very excited. He grew up in Minnesota in small world. I think he grew up a few neighborhoods away from my good friends, so we go to Minnesota all the time. We've chatted about that. He previously worked at the Goose Creek Fire Department. He enjoys fishing and working out, and is excited to be our new paramedic. Welcome. All right. We have a new officer in the Police Department, Kevin. Make your way up here, please. Kevin Baratini is our newest police officer. He grew up in Long Island, New York, so he got another New Yorker. He previously worked for the Charleston County Aviation Police Department. He has twins and enjoys spending time with his wife and his twins. How old are your twins?
Six years old.
Six years old. I think you have a handful. And Kevin, interestingly, he owned a DJ service, and for many years, he was the DJ for the New York Islanders and the New York Mets. Maybe we need you at our holiday party, the DJ. Well, welcome, Kevin. We're happy to have you. And then, last but not least, I think everybody has met Deborah. She is our new Finance Director, Deborah Hamilton. She grew up in Estill, South Carolina, and is a graduate of Winthrop University with a bachelor's in accounting. She previously worked with private country clubs, which included the Harbor Club, Danny Island, and the Kiowa Island Club. She enjoys boating with her husband and gardening, and one of her passions are children, and she has served for many years as a Girl Scout leader. Welcome, Deborah. Can I say a few words?
Thank you, Desiree. I just want to say thank you, Desiree, and the team, for giving me this opportunity to serve this great community. Also want to publicly thank Debbie for extending her retirement to assist me with this transition, and I'm just so ecstatic that she took the time out to help me. Thank you all.
All right. That's it, Mayor. We have a few new employees that could not be here today, so we'll introduce them next time we see you all.
Very good. Thank you, Desiree. Appreciate that. Next item is recognition of the Isle Palms Police Department officers for their response, investigation, and arrest made related to the April 7 shooting. I know we've got a number of you here tonight, so thank you all for joining us in full regalia, so appreciate that.
We'll ask them to come to the front.
Mm-hmm. Fair enough. Whichever way you want. You can alternate. It's funny, we didn't have to ask Thorstein to come to the front. We do seriously want to take this opportunity to recognize and express our deepest gratitude and appreciation to the men and women of our Police Department that responded to the April 7 shooting on the beach, the team involved in the investigation and ultimate arrest of the individuals responsible for the unfortunate event in our community. The bravery demonstrated by our officers the day of the shooting and the unwavering resolve to bring those responsible to justice is admirable and demonstrates our department's commitment to protecting our community and ensuring it remains a vibrant, safe community for those that come here to live, work, and play. Special recognition goes to the Detective's Unit, particularly Detective Tumanello, who's with us here tonight, for his role in the investigation. Also want to recognize the tremendous support, and Chief, I put a lot of this on you and the relationships around the Low Country from the many municipalities that showed up to help us that night and ongoing, and the teamwork involved at the local, state, and federal level during and after this event. So again, thank you to everyone involved in this effort. And Chief, thank you for getting everybody here tonight. No small task in and of itself. I would like to make a motion that we reorder the agenda and move item 8(c) Resolutions and Proclamations to discuss now.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we're moving up item 8(c), which is a resolution and proclamation. It's a proclamation to declare August 31st, December, August 31st, 2023 as the Debbie Shizma Suggs Day. So Debbie, we've got a proclamation. You can just stay right there if you want, because I know that's your preference.
Thank you.
Yes. So whereas Debbie Shizma Suggs, after 25 years of dedicated service to the Isle Palms community, is retiring August 31st, 2023. And whereas Debbie began her career with the City of Isle Palms in 1996 as a City Treasurer, providing accounting and control services for all financial activities of the city, responsible for revenue collections, financial reporting, and managing the city's debt and investments, as well as preparing the annual budget. And whereas Debbie's professionalism, commitment to excellence, leadership, and knowledge of the financial best practices in budgeting and finance have been instrumental in the city's strong financial position. And whereas Debbie has served the City of the Isle Palms and led in her role as Finance Director with integrity, compassion, professionalism, kindness, and a collaborative spirit with her colleagues. And whereas Debbie's devotion to the government finance position is matched by her love for her husband Steve Suggs, who are with us tonight, her sons Elliot and Mason, and her alma mater Clemson University, especially the Clemson football team. And whereas we, the City Council of the Isle Palms, do hereby recognize and express the deepest appreciation and respect for the services rendered by Debbie Shizma Suggs to the Isle Palms community and wish her well in retirement. Now therefore, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Isle Palms do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2023 as Debbie Shizma Suggs Day on the Isle Palms and encourage our community to join in the celebration of this day proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Isle Palms in meeting duly assembled this 22nd day of August 2023. Debbie, thank you. I thought we had a personal agreement that we would go at the same time, but again, it's okay. Fine.
Mayor, we do need a vote.
We need a vote on it?
Yes.
You only voted to move the agenda.
To move the item. Very good. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Got to be official. Get it. Very good. And Steve, thanks for joining us. Appreciate you doing that. Next item is presentation of new city initiative, Citybot, a citizen engagement solution. We have Bratton Riley with us tonight. Desiree, you want to give some context and kind of set this up?
Yes. This is one of the initiatives that we recommended to City Council as part of the budget process and looking for ways to leverage the citizen engagement that we have on the island and bring additional tools to our team and to the community to do so. And Citybot is an initiative that has been used by many communities. It's a very exciting tool that we would like to have an opportunity to implement on the island. We discussed it during the budget process, but I felt like it would be an appropriate time to have a full presentation as we're getting ready to implement this new software. Bratton?
Thank you, Desiree, so much. And Mayor and Council, thanks for having me. Staff, residents, it's good to be with you all. I'm Bratton Riley. I'm the CEO of Citybot. We, our headquarters are here in Charleston, and some of you might know this guy as my old man Joe Riley. I grew up in City Hall and learned so much about the importance and opportunity of relationship that every local government has with every single resident. And that is sacrosanct, and people trust their local government, and we want to help build on that relationship of trust and help local governments make it easier for residents to have a positive engagement experience with the city. And so that's what we do. And how we do that is we work through a variety of channels. We, as opposed to, you know, thinking about, well, this is the way things work now, and this is the way people communicate, we decided, well, let's figure out, how do people want to communicate? And what does their, what do they want their experience to be with their city? And so what we provide is an AI-powered chat platform, which means that residents can send a text message into the city and get an immediate response, or residents can go to the Isle Palms website, and they'll see a branded chat bot image on the website, which will be branded to the City of the Isle Palms, and really accentuate the brand on the homepage and all the other pages of the website so that residents can ask their questions directly or submit service requests, potholes, missed trash pickup, lost dogs, et cetera, through our platform. So our technology responds to each resident when they choose to connect with it. And so the way that works is, let me show you. Here is an example via text message. Let's see if this shows. So a resident, oops, sorry about that. A resident would text, let me try that again. No.
No.
That was worse. I run a technology company, but that doesn't mean I know I have technology. Well, that was working, and then, let's see. Let me go back one. Nope, that doesn't go back one. John, am I making your life miserable? I don't know if you have access to putting your cursor right around here and see if the play button comes on. If not, I'll improvise this. Survey says, all right, let me go back one. Okay, let me see if this does it now. There we go. So a resident texts hello, and then a greeting comes back, which gives instructions how engaged with the system. Here you see they're reporting a pothole, and we're going to ask the information for the residents to put their address in to report the pothole and then ask them to confirm it. And then when they confirm it, we're going to send it straight into the city, and it'll get routed to Public Works. And in the same way, if a resident asks a question, we want to answer it. I joke with local governments around the country that I've never met a human that gets their kicks out of navigating a city website. And the reason why is because cities provide so many important services to the public, a lot of which the public doesn't appreciate. And all the information, the law says that all the information about this needs to be publicly available. And so what that means is these websites have a lot of content on it, and they're hard to navigate, and what people want to do when they show up is just ask their question. That's what you want your user experience to be. You want to ask your question and get an answer and move on with your day and not necessarily make a phone call to a voicemail or send an email, et cetera. And the staff here is so busy doing the work that they do, we want to help them manage the inquiries that come in from residents and do it in real time. So 24/7 as a resident, you can send a text message to a number that we will be choosing together, and we'll promote that. So that's part of the work that we do, Mayor and Council, is we design these marketing pieces for our local government customers. So we have the great privilege of working with Chandra, and we will design marketing pieces that can be promoted in variety of ways to the residents. So this is New Orleans' example. Their product is not called Citybot. It's called Jazz. Could they have picked a better name? No. And we're so excited because, you know, part of the work that cities do, not all of it is creative and fun, and this is a great opportunity to work with Chandra, who's a great professional, and Desiree and the team. How do we want to brand this thing? How do we want to promote it to the residents, whether you live here year-round or you come here from time to time, or you're in a second home here? We want to let the residents know, here's how you can engage with the city 24/7, through sending a text message, or through showing up on the website and asking your question. And then everything gets organized and sent to the proper departments, depending on what the communication is, whether it's Public Works or Code Enforcement, et cetera. So that's what we get to do every day. Can I, does anyone have any questions about that?
Are the responses all AI-generated?
They are. They are. And so we only use information that is content that is created by the City of the Isle Palms. So we only use the website information to answer the questions. And then we default to an "I don't know." So if we cannot answer the question, we want to intentionally default to a, "I'm sorry, we don't know the answer," but we want to enable the resident to send their question in even if they have stumped us, which invariably happens. And so we want to collect that direct communication and send it into the city, and when the resident sends that communication in, they get an immediate response back that says, "Thank you so much for your message. Someone's going to get back in touch with you." So it's like when you call the 1-800 number and they say, "Hey, do you want to sit on hold for 45 minutes, or you want us to call you back? Do you ever consider hanging out on hold for 45 minutes?" No. So it's the same way. If you send in a complicated communication, the city deserves to receive it. Everything that is important to you is meaningful to the city. And so we want everyone to have the dignity of an instantaneous response back that says, "Thank you so much. Someone's going to get back in touch with you." So that's how we handle it. So we intentionally defer to an "I don't know" because then those communications that come in that we're unable to answer, well, it might be something that another resident has a question about. And so we want to add that to the system so we can answer it the next time.
Jan?
Yeah, I just had one question. I think one of the things that I'm most concerned about with all these new ideas we have is informing our community that what you're doing exists so that they know to use it. And I'm just wondering how we're going to go about doing that.
Well, thank you for the question. And I don't want to speak on staff's behalf, but it's the reason that we work as an extension of the marketing and communications team of the city to help design beautiful things. I was even talking to Desiree today. It's just like, we can put a QR code on a welcome packet that Island Realty and Carroll Realty have for residents that show up here, and you scan the QR code, and then it immediately enables you to text the city. So it's like, how do you, we've done all kinds of different things, whether it's door knockers, or we cross-market with important events throughout the year. We want to help raise awareness around the tropical season and how residents can interact with the local government during the tropical season, and they trust you to hear from you. They believe in what you have to say, and so we want to let residents know, hey, if you want to get updates, which is another part of our product, text updates on tropical weather, sign up and receive these communications because they do trust you, and they know that you're a source of truth. And we just, you know, we work hard with staff to try to help get the word out. And we measure it, and if something doesn't work, we'll try something else. So it's, you know, as a company, you know, we launch our products, but we don't disappear. And so we're meeting with our customers once a month to say, hey, what's coming up? What can we promote to the residents? We get the holiday season. What do you want to do about the holiday season? Well, you know what everyone asks during the holiday season is, "When's the trash pickup schedule?" Right? Well, let's just send a communication out. Say, "Want to know about the trash pickup schedule?" Here it is. So let's anticipate a lot of that stuff together. But it's a work in progress. It's, people don't magically learn about something. You might have the best technology in the world, but if people don't know about it, they're not going to use it. So you raise a very good point, which is why we work so hard with our customers to support the marketing effort.
Thank you. Scott?
Is this an open-ended system so that it's not just residents? Can anybody that gets to our website or access to the system put a question or a comment or a request into the city?
Correct. That's correct.
So that's open. So I guess the follow-on question is, let's say, and we have our, folks on the island, population on the island swings very dramatically up and down here. Who catches, how do you determine who's catching that request on the other end and on the response back? Do people, I mean, people would expect some kind of response if this is all AI-generated, and, you know, are all the Public Works are going to go to Donnie Pitts or one of his staff members? How do you designate within a municipality, like, who's going to respond? What's the response time? Or does it just go in and then somebody hopes to get a response back?
It's a great question. So let's say someone from out of town comes in here, and they see that their trash pickup day is on a Tuesday, and their trash wasn't picked up, and they send a communication in. So they'll say, "My trash wasn't picked up." We'll provide an address. It'll get routed internally into the system that we use. It's called Trello. It'll get routed directly to sanitation because we're picking up the key words around it being a missed trash pickup. So it goes straight to sanitation. I don't know if that's under Public Works here.
Yep.
And so, and then that person will get an email who's assigned to the sanitation services. They'll get an email that says, hey, there's a new service request that has come in. And so, but every resident's already been responded to. So I refer to it as the imaginary clock. You know, if someone sends something in on Facebook and it's 10 o'clock at night, and Chandra's like, "I want to go to bed," but then it's like, do I answer this now, or do I answer it in the morning? We want to take care of staff. It's like, no, go to sleep. Everyone gets the dignity of a response in the moment. Service request gets routed into sanitation. Sanitation has their own work they have to do. They don't want to get interrupted by these service requests when they're working on something. And so, but since the resident has already gotten the dignity of an instantaneous response, they know that the city will get around to it, but it's, they've already been responded to. And then that person in Public Works will get an email, "New missed trash pickup service request," then they can go attend to it, and when they close the ticket out, the resident gets an automatic communication back that says, "Thank you so much. We've picked up your trash," et cetera. So it all happens through an efficient process of integrating into the backend of how, you know, the departments work internally.
And does your system track the, you know, response times and that kind of thing?
We do not.
So in other words, resolutions. So once this goes into Donnie's mailbox, the 22 request, then it's up to Donnie to respond, I guess.
Well, let's say this. We do, we do track turnaround times, but we are careful to not project and expect a turnaround time to the residents unless our customers tell us to do that, if that makes sense.
Are you going to trial this before you go full implementation, or?
Yes.
It's totally up to-
Yeah, our timeline would have a couple-
Yeah, our timeline would have a couple weeks of a soft, a soft launch before we, you know, go, you know, dear Lord, go live and start promoting it.
I just know you've got limited resources, and if all of a sudden people are getting inundated with requests from all angles. I mean, it's a great, it's a great communication tool, and it sounds like it's going to be a push-out for notifications, too?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And Braden, what, I mean, this is something we've talked about implementing for some time, so it's exciting to get to this spot.
Yeah.
And maybe this is a staff question. What's our timing for soft or full launch? I mean, this fall?
End of September. Hopefully, we're ready for full implementation by October.
Gotcha. Perfect. Rusty?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess as a follow-up to what Councilmember Pierce had asked, even though you're not tracking turnaround times, are we going to do that? It's answered.
So this would work, this would work very similar. Right now, we have a reporter concern section on the homepage on the website, and we have an internal policy where we attempt to respond within 24 hours. Oftentimes, the resolution, obviously, cannot be done within 24 hours, but we at least reach out and say, "We've received your concern," and, you know, this is going to be routed to the appropriate department, and this is going to be the course of action.
And every department will have a designated person or persons that handle these messages?
Yes, just like we do with the reporter concern. So I think this would be taking the, taking the role of the reporter concern piece. And most of the times that we have folks reaching out for calls, it's just for information. So we think the AI portion is going to be very favorable for the community, because it's just going to be providing information that already exists on the website. It's just going to be much easier for them to know about it.
Well, and the push-out to the conversation.
My last question was on the push-out of notifications, which I think a lot of people are anxious about for storms and things of that nature. Is that something that the residents will sign up for or subscribe to?
That's correct. And that's also, goes back to marketing. You know, we got to promote that well. You know, you want to sign up to get, you know, tropical weather updates that are specific to your community. Like, just text hello to this number, and you can sign up, or...
And we'll have different, I'm sorry. We'll have different categories of information that people want to opt-in to receive direct notifications from the city. One will be evacuation or emergency alerts, city events, or programming from the recreation department. So if you have, you know, kids and want to stay up to date with all the programming and the athletic activities that they have, they would be able to opt into that. So it won't be just for emergencies or storm weather events. We have a very, a variety of categories that people can elect to be notified about.
And we work with North Charleston, City Charleston. We work with Sullivan's in Charleston County. And we're also doing some collaborative work, we hope, with the county 911 system and helping, they run a non-emergency number that gets 15,000 calls a month. And a lot of those are like, stuff that are, is related to whether it's Alapalms or City of Charleston, et cetera. So we're working also collaboratively as well with some of the agencies in Low Country to see if there's a way to kind of streamline supporting the county to the city response to non-emergencies, because people call that number thinking they have an emergency, or even 911, and it's not, you know, we're not dispatching law enforcement. So we're doing some other collaborative stuff that might hopefully ultimately impact here, too.
Breiten or Desiree, what else?
Excellent.
This looks great.
Thank you all. Thank you all so much. And we're not a company that disappears when we launch the product. Like, your feedback is like gold to us, so we just welcome it and just really appreciate the opportunity to work with you and residents. It works if y'all use it, too. So we hope y'all consider using it when you need to. So thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Yep. Next item is approval of previous meeting's minutes. We have a city council meeting from July 25th, special city council workshop on August 8, and all the committee meeting minutes are attached.
Motion to approve. Second?
Any edits or changes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Old Business Presentation and Discussion of Noise Study Conducted by Wild Dune Sweetgrass Inn. We've got Terry Hack with us tonight, representing the resort. This was presented to the Public Safety Committee, Jimmy, I guess, a week or two ago, and they asked to have a presentation to the full council. So Terry, thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate that. And this is in your packet already, so.
Hello, good evening. I think that I'm just going to field questions, as Desiree and I had spoken about. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I have one follow-up, or actually, two follow-ups whenever appropriate.
Questions from the, what is in your packet, or committee that's already heard, heard the report once?
You have a question? I've studied the noise study, and what's your plans for the future, as far as the outdoor concerts and the impact it has on a neighborhood?
I did put in, I submitted, I think, several times ago, all of the mitigation that we've already done. And it seems like perhaps that hasn't been communicated clearly to our neighbors, but we've done many, many items that have assisted in mitigating noise now. Whatever noise ordinance is the outcome of the work that you're doing, we will adhere to that. So we wouldn't have an outdoor concert that would exceed whatever the limits are that we're able to successfully design in a noise ordinance that would be across the entire island. It would be the law. So we understand that a noise ordinance will impact our ability to host some of the groups that we've hosted in the past. That is just a matter of course for us. We're just going to have to find other pieces of business that can conduct their celebrations, parties, events indoors, so that we don't have an impact on the neighborhood. But to have zero amplified noise coming from any space, outdoor space in Sweetgrass particularly, is really, it's unimaginable that we would have to have that kind of guideline. So I hope that answers your question, Councilwoman Ward.
Jan, and John, do you have a question?
I was just, are we going to discuss the report tonight? Is that the idea?
No.
Okay.
John?
Questions on the report.
Questions on the report, yeah.
I guess, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
I read it, and I guess the report probably generated more questions in my own mind than it answers.
Yes.
There's a few things that I did notice, and then I want to get into the data. But even the decibel reading that was, the definition of decibel that your consultant uses is different than the definition of decibels that we have in our ordinance. That's just one thing I noticed. And I don't know the impact of that, but this says it's, it's 10 times the logarithm of the ratio squared, sound pressure amplitude. And I think ours is to the log, is the logarithm, 10 times the logarithm of base 10. So I, you know, they're different definitions. And I don't, again, I don't know the implications, but I'm just noting that.
I'm happy to.
But the data itself, I guess, if I look at it, there's three line, there's three pertinent pieces on these three different time periods that you took. One is the black line, which is the proposed ordinance limits, day or night. The blue line happens to be, I guess, a 15-minute average of sound taken. And then there's these red lines that are high readings in that, excuse me, in that given hour. And so it appears that the blue line, you know, there's a few exceptions where it's gone over the limit, but it appears that it would even be potentially within the limits of our residential areas, limits, as opposed to the 75 and the, the, the limits that we set specifically for the Sweetgrass. So I don't, I don't even know if this, again, would justify the fact that we'd have two different readings, one for residents and one for Sweetgrass. It seems like it all fit within the same set of limits. But more concerning to me are these red exceedances on an hour.
Right.
And I don't know how long those are. They say seconds. I don't know if that's one second, or 20 seconds, or what it is. And it doesn't also show that there could be successive readings of those red lines up there. So unless we had the full packet of data to read it, we don't know how loud that's, you know, how many exceedances were occurring during that period of time. So, again, I don't know what to take from this. It's a lot of red exceedances that get fairly high, I see. And, again, I just don't know what to get from it. And I think we will talk a little bit later, hopefully, around where we're going with this when we talk about consultants and other things. But those are my observations, I guess, more than questions.
Yes, thank you.
Of the report.
The consultant had a good deal of difficulty interpreting the ordinance as it is currently written. So I don't know where, I don't know how that was written, but those, I think, yes, I think that we might need to look at those items. And also, Councilwoman Pierce, I took note of your request for all of the information, and I do have a document from our consultant. And he, I won't read it, but he gives you the pathway to get to all the data. It's very arduous, but it gives you the website.
Can you explain what that means? I mean, I would imagine they have a report or the data itself. What is a pathway?
You have to go on their website. You have to have their, their application in order to review the data. And we could certainly give this to another consultant to review it all. It's all there.
Could you just answer one, I guess one question I have is, I'm not clear why, you know, what is the reason why we can't get easy access to the underlying data? And I know you're going to hand me a piece of paper with a link that I have to get into somebody's system or an application. But this is, in my history, the first time I've ever received an executive summary without the actual report. So I'm baffled. I mean, I'm happy to do that, and I think that that should be made public, information. I don't understand why it's not being disclosed. And maybe you could answer that question. Why, why wouldn't it be disclosed to the public?
Clearly, I'm, it's all here. It's, it's hours of recordings. I can't give you a...
Well, they have to have underlying data to create this report.
And that's in there.
Yeah.
I don't know that I understand. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I'll take, I'll take the piece of paper, but I just...
I'm happy to make it public.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just got a comment here. I read this, and it's got, you know, it's got a good bit of information here, and it's obvious that sound sources, you know, inside and outside the property, or all sorts of things, whether it be activities at Sweetgrass Inn, wildlife, local, distant traffic, power washing. I, I just don't know what this really tells us at this point, that we could make any kind of decisions on or come to any sort of resolution in any way. I think we do need to have more information. I just don't know exactly what that is. But, you know, to give us a little better sense of if there've been violations, and if there are things that really are under Sweetgrass Inn's control, that should be taken into consideration, that we're not seeing in this executive summary.
Right. So we voluntarily did this study to try to help all of you understand what decibel levels you may want to employ throughout the city. So I, we don't even need this report. Just tell us what the decibels are that make sense, and that you have some kind of reason in which you have based that decibel level. There's, I don't see any data that tells me why 85 is good for front beach, and 75 is good for us, and 65 is good for the residents. I don't, if you can tell me your base, then I can take this back. And...
And I tend to agree with you on that. I think that we've got, again, this foray that we've had on trying to create a noise ordinance has been completely unsuccessful. I don't know any other way to put it. So I think we've got some work to do to find out, you know, what is it, what's going to be acceptable levels within the residential areas. I still think that there are some things to sort out clearly at the Sweetgrass. Your, you know, your report, and I would be interested in your interpretation. It does look like you're higher than what even the recommended are, and you're willing to make some changes there.
Yes.
But you need, you need the guideposts to understand what those changes would be.
Yes, sir.
So why don't we just maybe wrap this up and move on to the next item?
Yeah, and I think the next item is really where we need to get, as a council, to decide what we want to do from this proposal we have in front of us. Again, this study wasn't to guide the city to do anything. It was just to give a measurement. So...
Exactly. We only ask him to, sorry to interrupt you, Mayor, we only ask him to monitor and measure the sound. That's all we ask him to do.
Yeah. And I don't even know if we're going down that path. That's why we need to move to the next item and kind of talk about our next steps, I think. Terry?
May I just say one thing? We're serious about helping our neighbors and controlling the noise. We are serious about it, and we've continued to do that, short of not having a single person being able to amplify one single guitar on a afternoon at 5:30. That's all I'm asking. We'll do our part, and have been doing it.
Thank you, Terry. So the next item, kind of dovetailing that, and Scott to your, to your comment, and John, yours, you know, kind of what's next, and what do we do next? So the, in your packet, there's consideration of a proposal from RML Acoustics to provide an acoustical consulting related to noise ordinance. And it's got two different project scopes, if you will. Desiree, I know you've had the conversations with these folks. You want to provide a little background, and I think we, as a council, can decide what's next.
Yes. So this was a result of a recommendation that the Public Safety Committee made months ago, because the question continues to be, what is a reasonable decibel limit? If, if our goal is to have an object, a more of an, more of an objective ordinance that it's easier to enforce, the, the, there is, there seems to be a paralysis in understanding what that is, what that decibel is, what is appropriate for a residential community, what is appropriate for a residential community that directly abuts a commercial property, what is appropriate for a commercial property. I think that's where we continue to get stuck. Nobody on staff is an acoustic expert. So what we did, when we worked with the Public Safety Committee for months, is look at many, many ordinances from many communities, big and small, who have implemented similar ordinances. And that's what we, that's what we did. So they are modeled, the draft ordinance, with some changes that have, that have resulted, that have been implemented as a result of the conversations from the public safety committee. When city council first considered the ordinance, the entire ordinance is modeled against many other ordinances that have been successful, that have been in place for many years. So that's what we did. But I think there seems to be a, a, I think people, we all have a challenge in where the numbers came from. Again, they're modeled against other communities, and understanding whether those limits are reasonable. We, we have, we are not able to define that. And I think to that point, we are looking at experts, looking at people who have advised other communities when they're dealing with the same issue, because this is not uncommon. We have communities that are going from, from an ordinance that establishes decibel limits and doing away with that because of challenges with enforcement of that ordinance, and going back to something very similar, similar to what we are, we have today. And we have other communities who are going through the same process we are. So I think to that end, we started reaching out to people that have done this work, that understand acoustics, that understand how, how outdoor sound propagates, so that we can get some direction on whether or not we're close, or we're way far apart from where we should be. We have expanded our, we've done what we can with the resources that we have. We, we, we need some expertise that can help us identify things to consider in the ordinance, or things that we're not considering and we should be, or things that, you know, we're just completely off. But that's why we're paralyzed. That's why we can't get anything done.
John?
Yeah. Mayor, thanks. I, we're stuck in the mud. And I, the path we're on, I...
And I, the path we're on, I don't think is going to yield a noise ordinance that helps this city in any way right now. Council received a letter from David Cohen, and it was a long letter. I don't know if you've read it or not. But I just want to, if I'm allowed some freedom, just to read a few excerpts, because I want to propose a different path potentially. But David starts, he says, "I'm a retired electronics systems engineer and spent 37 years designing, building, testing, repairing, operating electronic systems for the U.S. Navy. As it relates to this subject, about 10 of those years was directly working with sonar systems or equipment specifically designed to detect the presence of man-made noise in the environment. Throughout my career, I conducted numerous noise surveys aimed at detecting and finding undesirable sound emanating from ships and equipment, as well as surveys determining the limits of noise for planned systems and certified newly installed equipment does not exceed established noise limits affecting communication and livability on the ship." He goes, "I want to encourage you not to adopt the proposed noise ordinance. I'm not saying we don't need to update the current ordinance, just that this proposed draft is not the solution." He goes on to say some why, but he says, "I feel the issue you are trying to deal with, if our current ordinance is reasonable, and what levels of noise should be restricted. And that is not going to be solved by adopting a specific day/night decibel level applied to all noise as proposed in the draft ordinance." He goes on to say, "In reading the proposed ordinance, several things hit me as being off, indicating this ordinance was piecemealed by someone not fully understanding what they're doing. Not blaming our staff, who copied it from Mount Pleasant, who copied it from Greenville, who I assume copied it from somewhere else. But some of the things he noticed is what I brought up earlier. We have in our ordinance two definitions of decibels, of what a decibel is. This is what I referred to you earlier." He talks about the existing, our existing ordinance, being a good ordinance as a base and building on it from there. But in our definition, we have, in our ordinance, we have the definition of plainly audible, although the term's not used anywhere else in the ordinance. It's defined but not used. The equipment that we call out's from 1971 sound meters. It's a 50-year-old meter. The sound meter technology's changed significantly since 1971. I'm just going to, I could go on and on with these things. But David offers us some solutions. It seems to be, as an expert as anybody else on this, we can hire. And my proposal is, I don't think council is capable of solving it at this point, and we should kick it to the planning commission, where David is a member of it. Give them two months to battle this, bat this around. If they feel that a study is needed, if we need more, they need more data, then have them come back to council, and yes, we'll authorize the study to get them what they need. But I think that is the proper spot right now, to develop an ordinance that meets everybody's needs, takes everything into consideration, they're technical-minded people, and can come back with something that's reasonable for us to then consider. So that's my recommendation for us to talk about, at least.
Yeah. I mean, making that informal, do we need a motion to take something to the planning commission?
Um, yeah, I think-
We move it to the planning commission.
I mean, if there's no, if nobody opposes that path, which I think it's a good idea, then I don't think we need to have an ordinance.
Yeah. Douglas, any reaction?
Yeah. I mean, I would just say, they are, I think John is correct, they're technically minded, but they are of the building, zoning, construction, I mean, that's their kind of role, and that's really what they do. Not that they're not capable of handling issues that are outside of the wheelhouse, but it, I mean, it's not what they would, it's in a totally different section of the ordinance than they've, that they've ever dealt with. It's dealing with, you know, it's in the public safety realm, which they don't really, they've never gotten outside of the kind of zoning and development statutes in our ordinance. So it would certainly be off of their normal course of, you know, their normal course of action. But again, I mean, they're a very capable, smart group. It just would be not squarely in their wheelhouse.
Yeah. And it's two months of reasonable timeframe to expect, even if it's identification of a resource, or whatever it may be.
It'd be quick for them, Mayor.
Yeah, well, I used to be there, you know.
You've done it.
Maybe we should ask David?
No, let's keep going.
I kind of wonder if just David-
He's here.
With, yeah, we spoke earlier, but just David and a, and kind of a technically, you know, just a group, a group of, I don't want to, I don't want to advise that we, but I almost think that David with staff, with public safety, I mean, if we wanted to have other outside-acoustical experts, I think that would probably be more appropriate than the planning commission. But if the planning commission is easiest, certainly would be fine.
I'd just like to say, the way that Alapam's city government is organized, they're really, this sort of falls between the cracks, really. It's not a public safety issue, and it's not a, it's more like a planning and zoning issue. In other cities where I've been a consultant, this would be handled by the planning, planning commission, because they would be writing ordinances and, and things like that. So I think it could be handled by either. I think it's, I think planning commission may, let's, let's give them a chance to see what they can do with it and bring it back, because I think we're at an impasse right now with the Public Safety Committee.
Rusty?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I read David's email to us, and I thought it was full of great information, quite honestly. And coming from a perspective from someone who not only knows what they're talking about, it was very apparent there, but also a lot of information that we've never heard before. And I look at the proposal that we have out there for this consultant, and I look, you know, and it's like scope number one, conduct a conference call, be on site for a two-day trip to the city of Alapams, go to the residents and monitor noise, and do the same thing at Sweetgrass Inn, and then download, analyze the data, and then have a report come back to us. I think we'd be right back in the same spot we were before. We'd be sitting here as a council, scratching our heads, wondering what the right number or numbers was, or is. And whether it's the planning commission, or at least have David Cohen involved in some way with some sort of committee, I think it's the wisest thing to do, to take a little time and, and bring it back to us later.
All right. Let's do planning commission. I think we got general agreement?
Yeah.
Good.
And they will have two months to come back, whether they're a recommendation or a request for a digital resource.
Our resource needs, yeah.
Should we ask them if they need more time than that?
We can certainly ask them.
Get a check line.
Since we're putting this on them, I'd-
Yeah, I mean, they, you can, Douglas can speak for them, so.
How is this going to work with this proposal that we're looking at?
We're tabling it.
Yeah, you don't have to take any action.
It's going to the planning commission. They'll come back with resource needs, or more time, or whatever they need.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Next item, C, update on minor dune repair project between 114 and 304 Ocean Boulevard. Desiree, or Douglas?
Yes, I can just provide a quick update. We talked about it at length at the workshop meeting, where, as you all know, we submitted and sent out easement agreements to all the property owners that are along the project area, which is 114 to 304 Ocean. We have, since the last time we reported on this, we have heard back from all the, all the 21 property owners along that stretch, and only five folks agreed to grant apartment easement to the city. We had, y'all recall the presentation from Coastal Science and Engineering about the importance for the effectiveness of the project for us to have a continuous berm. So we went back to the table and pivoted and used a lot of the feedback that we received from the property owners and their concerns with granting a permanent easement for such a small scope of a project, and concerns about property rights, concerns about their property values, and ultimately, where we're not going to get to a place where we can perform and complete a project that we need, particularly now with the active hurricane season upon us. So we worked with our attorneys, we worked with several coastal experts in crafting a position that would protect the city, that could be, that could help us to complete a project down there, and agreed on a temporary two-year easement for these two projects. So the intent would be to cover this small project and the Army Corps of Engineers project that we're actively working on, that will place almost 500,000 yards, cubic yards of sand down the southern tip near Preach Inlet, which we know is coming really soon. So we're pursuing that. Our attorneys are comfortable with that. We believe that there is bigger and more risk in not doing a project down that end than some of the risk associated and the administrative hurdles associated with not having permanent easements. So we feel comfortable moving in that. We've communicated with the property owners, and we believe that we will have 90%, if not 100% participation, which is ultimately our goal. So we will be sending revised easement agreements. We were attempting and hoping for that to happen today, but we couldn't do that. So to do that by tomorrow, and give folks about a week, 10 days, to return that to us, and ideally, we would like to issue a notice to proceed to the contractor by the week following Labor Day. So we're excited and eager to get the project done. Again, this is prime hurricane season, and we want to get, we want to get some protection out there.
Good. I know it has been untold hours for both of you all, so thank you for pushing that along. Questions or comments? Jane?
I'd just like to say that I think our liability, if we, of doing nothing, is greater than our, than doing something that is less of what we, what ideally like. So I think this is a good idea.
I just wanted to say, I think this process highlighted a deficiency that we have in terms of a policy on the use of, you know, for beach restoration. And our goal is going to be to, once we get this project conducted, to work with council in developing that, so that we have a guideline and a blueprint of how to deal with situations like this, because we do have a commitment to restoring and protecting the beach. We have a local beach management plan that establishes that according to the, to state regulations. We are collecting funds for the purpose of restoring the beach, and I think it's upon us to develop a plan moving forward. And it may be that in the future, we do decide that we need to pursue permanent easements in order to facilitate the city's beach restoration practices. But I think that you do that by having, not project-specific, I think it requires a more of a comprehensive educational process with property owners and, and time. I think that after we get through this hurdle, we get through these processes, we need to get, we need to start working on that, and we'll be committed to doing so.
Again, just thank you to you and Douglas for the amount of time you all spent on this one. I know, I know it's been a lot, so. Next is new business item, A, discussion of beach reach ridership for summer 2023. There was a recent card, a board meeting that Councilmember Ward attended, and there were some updated numbers. So Jimmy, you want to update council?
Yes, thank you, sir. Yeah, we meet every month up at the COG, and there's about 20, 25 board members, I guess, and most of them are government leaders, mayors, or council members from all over the tri-county area. And then '21, we started this experiment called the Beach Reach. And, you know, I watched the buses closely, and it doesn't look like many people are riding them, but at our last meeting last week, last Wednesday, we had an update for, a comparison for June and July from '21 to '23. And for, for my June '21 to '23, there's a big increase. There was a 72% increase in ridership at 169 riders, so that's 72% or not a whole lot. But it's improving. And Mayor Haney was there at the meeting, and he is committed to sticking with the program, which I'm encouraged about. In July, the ridership improved over from '22 to '23 by 143%. There was over 300 riders then, as compared to 98 on a previous month. So it's not the numbers that we want, but I think it's, it's a good project, and everybody seems to be excited about it, and it's moving in the right direction. And I hope the city, the council, will continue to support the program. If we can get these numbers up, I was pretty encouraged by 313. That's just for one month, and we don't have August yet, of course. And everybody remembers that Memorial Day, which was in May, but that was a complete washout. I'm hoping to lobby hard to card for, to get a shelter down here at 14th Avenue for people to wait when it's raining or extremely hot outside. But I'm very encouraged, and I'm hoping that maybe, you know, we get the ridership up to, say, 1,000 in a month. Who knows? That probably takes four, five, maybe 600 vehicles off, off the roads on the weekends. And as you all know, these numbers are just for two days a week during these months. It's just Saturday and Sunday. And of course, Labor Day, it'll be, they'll be running on Monday. But that's my report. If anybody had any questions.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Jimmy. Appreciate that. Are other items under new business, other than items E and P? And item P is only for discussion, and I, we discussed during our workshop in some detail. We're going to do one motion and vote for approval for all these items. I would suggest, if residents have questions or want additional information, they could watch the August 8 workshop session or review the minutes which are attached in this packet tonight. So except for items E and P, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, any other questions or comments on any particular item? Again, we touched on these in pretty good detail at the workshop. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item E is one of our new ones, consideration of recommendation from the Administration Committee to appoint Culver Kidd as city prosecutor. John, you want to provide a little context or update on this one?
Sure. So we had an open city prosecutor position, because the past prosecutor was, we moved to an associate judge for the city. So there was an RFP put out. We received five attorneys putting their candidacy for it. It was Carolyn Blue, Joe Good, Chip Cannon, Culver Kidd, and Mayor Farmer. We interviewed all those candidates, and they were, I must say, they were outstanding candidates, and it was a very difficult decision. But we ultimately chose Culver Kidd. Culver was a, is not from the, it doesn't have a lot of association with the area, but currently, or has some experience with prosecution, and answered the questions and responded to our questions very favorably, and I think will do a fantastic job for the city. So that's our recommendation to council.
And what's his timing for taking this role? Would we, as soon as we vote tonight?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Scott?
I was just going to say, I think his range of cases that he's handled for prosecution were quite impressive, and I think he'd be a good fit.
So I'd like to make a motion that we have Culver Kidd as our city prosecutor.
Second.
Other questions or comments?
I would just add that, you know, being on the committee, there's no doubt that his broad range of experience really truly helped him stand out among a group of excellent candidates.
And a motion, and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, item P, discussion of new parking reconfiguration alternative for the intercoastal side of the marina. I know we've got, John, I think, some slides on this particular piece, or Desiree, I'm going to chair that, sorry, I forgot we were doing it from here. And Douglas, I'll let you give us background and kind of update on where we are.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. John, if you could go to PC 3, I think. So just a little background to bring kind of everybody back up to speed. You will recall that last winter, at the suggestion of the Islander Restaurant, we engaged a third party to try to find, a third-party engineer, designer, to try to find a more permanent solution really to the shared parking lot. We went through a process with the Real Property Committee at the time, and we couldn't come to a permanent solution. So we took this last summer. We very actively managed it. We watched what was happening at the marina and at that parking space. And we wanted to share with you these slides, and then- to share with you these slides and then talk a little bit about our takeaways and what we saw. So these are obviously July 8. And I would just ask that you pay attention to this lot, which is the trailer lot. These 16 spaces, these are the dedicated resident spaces. These are the Marina-operated spaces. So just kind of watch those. We're trying to, we're also trying to see if there's other space kind of behind there, but it's challenging to see. But this is very early in the morning, and you see that the Marina space, trailer spaces are starting to load up. And we see that, we see that pattern where those will kind of go first. And we'll just, you'll see the timestamp at the bottom corner, and I'm just going to scroll through them. So 7:00, still very quiet. 8:00 a.m., there's our parking attendant in the golf cart by the restaurant entrance. So we start managing it, and you'll see that-
Douglas, I hate to interrupt. What day of the week is this?
I'm sorry, these, and I should have said-
I know it's eight, but what day of the week?
Saturday.
They're all Saturdays.
And I would say, I should have said this, that we're going to go through a few days, but they are all Saturdays. And we kind of felt like, after watching it, that if we could solve for a Saturday in July and a Saturday in August, we really would be solving the problem. The rest of the days that we looked at and analyzed, we didn't feel like there was any issue, either for the residents, for the trailers, for the restaurant, for the Marina. So we really think we're kind of, you know, working to figure out Saturdays in the summer. That's obviously when the demand is highest down there. So there, you'll notice again that this is 9:00, 9:00 a.m. The Marina trailer spaces are at this point pretty full getting there. I was a little shocked at how late trailers showed for the residents. That's noon, and you can see there, it's starting to get pretty full. There's 11 spaces. I think there's probably eight or nine cars, trailers there. But you will notice, kind of as we sort through these, the 16 go pretty lightly used. So that's one. And then this is three. So this-
16 vehicle.
16 what? Trailers?
I'm sorry, the 16-vehicle spaces to the right. I'm sorry.
The resident-only spaces.
The resident-only car spaces are pretty lightly used. The trailers are obviously pretty heavily used.
Yeah.
So this is 3:00 p.m. This is when our agreement allowed the restaurant to start using it. So up until, from the morning until 3:00, it was exclusively trailers. So now you'll see and watch the spaces as space is available, and as trailers leave, you'll notice that two cars will start to take those places. So that's 4:00. You see there, now cars start to fill in. That's about as full as you'll see the resident spaces, I believe. There are four. So now it's becoming, that's 5:00. It's becoming primarily cars in the middle. That's, and this will be a theme, that at 6:00, that's really the pinch point. All cars at this point, all trailers are gone. So this is a pretty typical day, and then after 8:00, it starts to thin out. So I'll go quickly through. This is the next Saturday. This is Saturday, July 15. Same thing. You'll notice that the Marina trailers, very heavily utilized. Middle section, the shared lot, pretty light until really later in the afternoon. So that's noon, there's still spaces. Also notice that the resident car spaces are widely So really, kind of gets busiest early afternoon, kind of 3-ish, which was a surprise to us. I think we thought it was going to be kind of 8, 9, 10. And then this is 3:00. So now you'll see trailers start to leave, and the cars start to fill in. That's 5:00. That's 6:00, primarily cars. 7:00, kind of all cars. So you'll see that, we'll go just through quickly, a few more, but it's-
While you're scrolling through that, what was the date?
What was the date that the Marina opened? Matt, I should have mentioned that, that the, we really felt like we couldn't get a good, we kept a lot of photos, a lot of data, but these started, I think, July 8, and the Marina really started operating kind of at their full capacity right about that time. So we kind of discounted all of the information that we had while they were under construction. It was a construction site. There were, patterns were generally similar, but it was a construction site next door. So we really felt like they had to have their trailer spaces available for us to truly kind of get a feel for what was going to go on. So it was right around the beginning of July.
It looks like as many as 15 trailers are there at one time with the Marina space and the space in the shared lot being occupied.
Well, we have 11, and I think all 11 of those were taken. And I think they have 14. I think they have 14. So I think we, I think it gets up to 25, and it's very-
Right along the other side of the road there?
Yeah.
14?
Yeah.
Oh, it goes around. Yeah. Okay.
So then, again, at 8:00 at night, it's very heavily cars. And then we get into August. We'll go through these quicker. So when we talk about takeaways, I think our takeaway was that, and part of what we wanted to do, and we were kind of hearing the idea that the trailer spaces could be reduced in the plan. We have 11 now. At our kind of discussions last winter, we didn't know. We really didn't know the usage, so we really wanted to study that. And I think our takeaway is that the trailer spaces are very well utilized by the residents. The other takeaway for us is all of the plans that we looked at had an increase in those dedicated car spaces. Currently have 16. I think that all of the plans had around 25. We question whether that increase is necessary. We think that at 16, it serves the residents well. We don't know that there was really ever a situation where a resident didn't have a place to park. We do realize that, you know, we're hoping to make that a more attractive spot for the residents in the future with the dock, with the boardwalk, with that greenway that we've been working on. So we think we're going to push, you know, hopefully, we're going to have more resident involvement there, but we think that with the amount of parking that's on the site, we probably don't need to increase the dedicated car spaces. So that has led us to talk to the Marina, talk about re-engaging Matt Klein, give him this feedback. We specifically asked Matt to produce three plans, leaving, and all three plans leaving the number of dedicated resident car spaces roughly the same, 16. So not increasing those, but shifting the number of trailers between one plan on the high end of trailers at 10, one plan on the low end of trailers at 5, and then some middle number. We couldn't get the restaurant, last year, we couldn't get the restaurant to agree with the plan that had 10 trailers. I think we were hopeful that if we could give a little bit more of those dedicated car spaces, we could keep the 10 trailers and get them the spaces that they would need to be agreeable. We obviously, there's a lease, they're under lease, they're in an agreement. So to change that, we think we'd need their cooperation. So we have tried to re-engage, and we have re-engaged the engineer. We're working on that effort now. But we just wanted to kind of get, before we got too far down the road with an engineer, get your feedback on whether you think that's an appropriate assessment. We have, we went through the Public Services and Facilities Committee. I think they felt like this was an issue that should probably have all the council involved with it because it ultimately come to the full council. So for tonight's purposes, we just wanted to get your kind of impressions on those issues. We haven't had much feedback from Islander at this stage. We don't know if they are going to, you know, like I said, it was their kind of suggestion to start this hard division of uses, but it might be that they like the way it operated this past summer and quite happy with the status quo. We don't know that. They haven't told us that. But if we're not going to do a reconfiguration, we would expect to fold in the management of the site in with the future parking management company. So if we're going to go that route, we need to, you know, we're in the midst of doing that as well, so we need to make those arrangements. So if we're either going to do construction or we're going to hand over management, either way, we need some directive on the issue and start working towards that.
Hand over management to whom?
The-
The outsourced parking.
The outsourced parking firms that we're talking to now.
Rusty?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a lot of discussion at Public Services and Facilities about this. And, I mean, the slides tell the tale in terms of the trailer parking, in my opinion. We definitely need at least the 10 trailer parking spaces for our residents. I think it tells the tale very clearly, and it also shows that it transitions in the afternoon, just as we thought it would, that the trailers start leaving, then they start double parking the cars. You know, the surprise for me, to some extent, was the same that you all recognized, that the 16 resident-only parking spaces never really truly got completely filled. There were a few times it was close, but it's obvious that they weren't filled completely up. I think your point, Douglas, that, you know, part of it also is that we don't have a fully developed public area down there yet. It's still a work in progress. So we're not getting all the attention from residents that we will get when we have that place in great shape down there. I would like to see us, at this point, I think we need to sort of press things here with the tenant down there, try to come to some kind of an agreement here where we basically possibly do away with shared parking, give them their parking spaces that are dedicated there, have the city and the residents have their own parking spaces, looking forward to the point that at some point, since we're permitted, we could take the area there where the outfall is, pipe that from where the dumpsters are all the way down to the outfall and create even more parking spaces that will be flexible enough and open for residence, resident parking and golf carts. I'd like to see us go in that direction, turn the parking for Islander 71 over to them, let them do what they want to with their parking lot. We take the other.
Douglas is going to pull up the layout, the latest layout that we received from Matt Klein. As he indicated, we, with agreement from the restaurant, we re-engaged him to develop another parking layout that, as Douglas said, maybe kept the number of resident-only parking spaces at 16, but also give us the flexibility to increase the number of parking spaces in what would hopefully be the city lot in that corner if we decide to pipe 41st all the way to the head wall. As we all know, this project is going forward this fall, fully paid for by the state, and there is piping happening from the intersection of 41st and Waterway all the way to where the road starts curving, heading into the boat ramp. All of that is going to be piped. And you can see that the design already assumes that parking spaces would be added or could be added to that right-of-way.
And Desiree, just for clarity, it's the left-hand side, and there's 25 spots that are in that piped area right there.
So this is the-
Doesn't like being-
All of this would be new parking spaces after the city pipes that ditch. So right now, this area is used by truck and trailers. The parking plan only allows trailer parking in that right-of-way if available. So there would be an opportunity, if the city wanted to, to convert that to vehicle or angle parking, and that would add potentially 25, 35 new parking spaces. If we decide with the contractor that's going to be selected to do the drainage project and piping all the way here, we could go to that contractor and ask them for a change order, a proposal, to extend that pipe all the way to the outfall, which is right now not contemplated because we don't have control of this corner lot. Therefore, any additional space would not benefit the city. But if we are able to effectuate this split and the city takes this corner lot, we would have an opportunity to increase the number of parking spaces in this corner lot, which is currently used by the restaurant for employee parking.
And Douglas, in this scenario, so closest to the restaurant, what's their total parking number? If you, is it 100 and something, I think?
In the red, in the leased area, I think it's 96 or 96.
100 in this plan.
100 for the restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this plan, it's the latest one. We haven't received yet feedback from the Islander 71 folks, but this one keeps the number of resident-only parking spaces in the corner lot at 16. The latest plan we had looked at, that the committee liked last year, had that number at 23. So we went back to man and say, okay, how can we maximize the trailer parking spaces, the restaurant parking spaces by keeping it at 16, knowing that we would have the ability to pipe it and then extend more and increase the number of spaces adjacent to the ditch, but keeping the 10. It's sort of a give or take. You know, as you add a trailer parking space, it changes the entire layout. So we're just playing, Douglas said, you know, what does it look like if we have 10 trailer spots? What would it look like with eight? And then we can have a comparison of, as we add trailer parking spaces, how does that impact the vehicle count?
So I know that the main concerns for the restaurant are obviously cars, parking, but it was also the ability to close off the middle area for their parking, for their employees.
And this does that.
It looks like this does that. Is this the same number as they needed for that area, or is this smaller?
This has less spaces than the plan that they advocated, that they supported last winter. But I think it maintains that same ability to stack. But we do think it's, this plan is, I think, maybe 20 less than the plan they supported last summer.
And then also, does this give the ability for the trucks to get in and out, the larger food trucks? I know that was a big issue.
Yeah. So the two things that the restaurant really wanted to make sure that Matt Klein, who they had originally engaged themselves, was the ability for deliveries to take place. And this is something that Matt took into consideration in every of his designs. And then the number one priority that I recall from last year from the restaurant folks was the ability to close off an area so that they can stack vehicles or stack their employees. And this one does that in the middle.
But it's 20 fewer spots than what they had-
The one they supported.
When we first started this discussion that they were looking at.
I believe so.
I believe it's, so I believe that their plan, which was E, had 116 parking spaces. This one has 100 with the ability to stack. I think, yeah, we're down to Plan H, so.
But we're, I mean, it's been added on the Marina side, plus the 25 on the piping, plus the whatever, another 20 or 30 up at the additional piping. I mean, we're adding spaces to the entire property, obviously. And the Schuler side of the house, I mean, some of that obviously helped by having all that be resident-free parking and essentially doubling the numbers there. So, I mean, it feels like we're getting to a good total number of parking once we finish the 41st outfall. Jane?
Okay, a number of things. Let me just go through this. Trailer parking, it appears from the photographs that we definitely need to have 10 trailer parking spaces for residents plus the 14 that the Marina is off. plus the fourteen that the Marina is offering to satisfy demand today. Okay. With, with the general parking, not only are there ninety-six spaces in that area dedicated to the restaurant, but the Marina has said that the restaurant is welcome to use, there are a hundred and fifty spaces on their side of the lot as well. So, when the restaurant is complaining about not having enough parking, it's not having enough parking for their exclusive control completely. There's plenty of parking out there. That's not even including the, the twenty-five or thirty spaces that we're going to add on, on Forty-first Avenue. The residential, dedicated residential parking spaces will all be in the, the back lot, right? That'll be what I call the park, the lot that's for the park, for the, for the-
Until we, until we pipe that additional piece, yes.
Yeah. Well, and- Well, the, the residential parking will remain there as well, and we could even add to that, there's sixteen now, we could add more. But remember that residents will always be able to park free anywhere in the Marina, and I believe at the restaurant too. So, sixteen to twenty-five dedicated spaces, plus any of the two-hundred-and-fifty spots on the, on the site that are open to the public, that the residents could be parked for free. So I think the dedicated area at the, this little pocket, what I'm calling a pocket park at the back, for our residents, is a good idea to have at all times as a resident, as an Isle of Palms-only area in our Marina, where we can go anytime we want, which I think is the one thing we have gained in all of our negotiations. Now, beloved, the last thing I'll mention, and that is, I still believe that it would be better for the restaurant to have its own separate entrance, full control of access to its parking and property, and not have to go through the city's property to get to their restaurant. I think that just could be, could create complications in the future.
You just, you can't get there.
It's all, it's all of these properties.
Scott?
Quick question. Jan, you mentioned the, all the parking that the Marina is offering to the restaurant. Is there, are we aware, is there an agreement between the restaurant owner and the Marina owners to ensure that all that parking is available when they need it? And I don't, I don't, I'm just, this is just a question. And is that, if, if it's non-resident, going to the restaurant, is it a paid parking, or is it a free parking? Do we know that?
I, I know that the, the Marina operator, they offer the first hour for free for anybody that parks at the Marina. It's free anytime, any hour for residents. I don't think that they have a formal agreement, but they don't lock their parking area, so they, there is no restrictions for vehicles to park in the Marina property. And I do know that there have been instances where the restaurant has had special events, and in their communications with the Marina operator, it is, it has always been offered that if they needed additional parking spaces, that they would park in the Marina.
Yeah, I'm just trying to determine whether it's under their control or not, and I think what I'm hearing, it's not under their control. It's an offer to potentially utilize, but there's no codified agreement between the two, for the restaurant.
That's right.
So Desiree, the change would be in this, if we went with this scenario, the red line would become the new lease premises for Islander Seventy-One.
Correct. That's how this is drawn up.
And the shared parking, to your comment, Douglas, sorry.
So, when does the MOU expire?
Labor Day.
Labor Day, this week. Um, next, next week.
And what was that question?
When does the MOU expire?
Oh.
Because at that point, we're, we basically default to what's in the lease, is that correct?
Correct, which, which is, it's, it's shared parking managed by the city, and there would be no dedicated trailer parking spaces for residents.
So, if that's the case, I mean, we're really, I mean, we can talk about what do we want, but we have to have the party agree to this. And if you've not even talked to them yet, I don't, I mean, wouldn't it make sense that we sit down, and also include the, the Marina operator? Because, I mean, part of this thing, it's like a balloon, you punch in here and it pops out over here. And, I mean, part of the reason why we're having issues with trailer space is because he reduced the trailer space. So, we added parking spaces, but we reduced trailer spaces. So, you know, it's, it's a give-and-take situation, and I think it would be, if everybody went into a room with the objectives, and everybody realized, I may not get exactly what I want, but, you know, it's a give-and-take situation, and come out, because the Marina op, I mean, the restaurant, I, I think, proposed this last year, this concept. I got hung up in the, in the minutia, but I think that if everybody went into a room with the objective that they're not going to get exactly what they want, but they're going to come out of there with a plan that's better than what they have today, I just, I'd be hopeful that, you know, we could come to some agreement here. But we have to have their agreement to move forward.
Yeah. I do not disagree with any of that, but it has not been for lack of effort at this point.
Yeah.
And I think that the biggest, again, the biggest holdup, I think everybody agrees on the concept, and the benefits of separating the lots and each having their own control over their, their area. The, the conundrum was agreeing on the number of, of, of trailer parking spaces for, for that area. Obviously, the Marina lease is a separate lease, they have their own number of parking spaces, trailer parking spaces, but I think there was a, a lack of understanding of how they were really used, and how much they would be used by residents. And we saw this summer as an opportunity to be really vigilant in trying to identify how it's used, how much demand there is, and that's why we agreed to having a dedicated person sitting there, you know, every, you know, every hour during the day, on the weekends, to help us control that. And I guess that's, that's a conundrum. The restaurant would like to maximize vehicle parking spaces, and we understand why, that's their, you know, their business model is supported by that. But then, at the same time, we have to have a, a reasonable number of trailer parking spaces to meet the demand by, from residents in that, in that area.
Is it a feasible option? You know, I think, I like the idea of getting Mr. Schuler and the owners of the restaurant, and the city in a room at the same time. Is it feasible that if he's offering up free parking for the restaurant, for all those vacant parking spots, would he be open to maybe dedicating a few of those to trailer parking, which might alleviate, you know, part of the balloon popping out there? I mean, would Mr. Schuler be open to offering up a couple of, you know, a few slots for some trailer parking?
Well, I think with the ten, we've got what we need.
But it doesn't sound like the restaurants, doesn't sound like the restaurant's really on board with that number.
We don't know that. We don't know the answer to that.
Where do they stand with this alternative here?
We have not, we have not heard any feedback on this particular alternative.
It's quite similar to, to some of the others they've seen.
It's very similar. The difference is, we asked Matt to reduce the number of, of resident-only parking spaces, just because of what we've seen in terms of usage, to sixteen, so that we can maximize and give them more space to accommodate more vehicles in an effort to find a compromise that they would be.
So how many, how many more spaces, vehicle spaces, did the restaurant get when we took a, when we moved from, this one, this design looks almost identical to G, or whatever it was, that the restaurant said absolutely last year that was not going to work for them. So I'm, what I'm trying to, I don't remember the numbers, like, how many more spaces did this have? Like, what, what did this?
I don't know what the net increase is, but I, it reduces cities, but I think it gives them the ability to stack vehicles, which I don't think that the other version had. And that was something that they really wanted to keep. And so this one does have that in the middle, that would allow, that would allow them to block both sides and still have a, a good flow around there, would be their property, while maintaining that ability to stack in the middle.
So I think for tonight's purpose, you're looking for direction. Is this reasonable to at least go back to the restaurant group and, and start negotiations and see if we can get to a compromised spot?
Look, where are we with the restaurant group? You put it out there to them, they haven't responded. So how do we, how do we move that dime to get them to the point where they, they were discussing this with city administration?
You know, we, before we re-engaged this conversation with the Property Real Public Services and Facilities Committee, we did have a meeting with one of the partners from the restaurant, and just trying to understand their position, to see whether or not it was worth to pursue this endeavor. And I think ultimately, we agree that it would be beneficial to have Matt Klein take a stab at another layout. So I think that, from that perspective, that shows at least a willingness to understand what is possible. I do think that maybe this summer, things worked out really well, because of the constant management, that we don't know if they're, if they continue to be motivated with a, with a plan that, that separates the two lots. That's just me speculating, I don't know. I think that because we were actively managing it and controlling the access, it, it worked, I think it worked overall. I mean, there were hiccups, I'm not going to lie. It's not, not an easy task, but I think overall, it, it worked, it worked pretty seamlessly over the weekend. It is, I, I don't think it would be reasonable for the city to continue down this path and have a dedicated VSO or a dedicated person sitting in essentially an empty lot for many hours during the day. So I wouldn't advocate for that. I think if we stay with the status quo, we would include this as part of the scope that either the police department, hopefully when we get a, a third-party parking manager to enforce parking Island Y, that they would, they would patrol that as, as they would in the other place. But there wouldn't be a controlled access, so we would have, you know, to issue tickets to people that park there that don't follow the instructions on the signs. And that is how I visualize managing if, if the status, if, if we stay with the status quo with shared parking. I, I don't think that we can dedicate a person for the entire summer there.
Yeah. And I think you've heard enough from council tonight that we're interested in pursuing some type of an agreement that gives us close to this, and I think we just push forward.
Is there any interest in, in the city asking the contractor that is selected to do the work at Forty-first, the drainage outfall project, to give us an, an idea and an estimate of what it would take to extend the pipe all the way to the outfall?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
I think that the cost would be, would make sense, because it would already be mobilized to the side, so it would, we would treat it as a change order, but I think we, we would be remiss if we don't take an opportunity to at least explore that.
I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question? You said you reduced the residential parking to sixteen. Does that mean that, that we've got the, the parking spaces double-stacked? That one side of that used to be residential parking, and you've just allowed it to go to the, I mean, where did you get those?
No, the-
How did you reduce the, our parking to sixteen? Where?
The, the plan, the, the latest plan that the city looked at last year had twenty-three in that corner lot.
Yes.
That got, that got reduced to sixteen, which is what we currently have today.
What happened to those twenty-three? Where was the land that those twenty-three were on?
You're giving some of it back to the, or giving some of it to the restaurant.
Yeah, we, we captured some of it for the trailer parking spaces on the ten.
It got made shorter, I think.
This line, I think roughly used to be here. So these spaces-
Those spaces. So you've given them an extra twenty feet of a property that was dedicated to the city.
Well, it was, it was on a piece of paper that we, nobody could agree to.
It was several hours.
You have a lot of them.
All right. I'm not sure I want to show this one to, I mean, they're going to look at it anyway, but it's Islander Seventy-One, because I don't want to give them anything beyond what we talked about at that last negotiations. Give it to them before we start negotiating with them again. But, I don't know, maybe they've seen it now.
You've got direction at this point?
But they, I mean, they, there's no, there's no giving. This, this is, we can go back to where we were.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that, those are, those are, we have to come up with something that makes them happy, or we go back to where we were, because that's what the contract is.
All right, are you doing-
We can't dictate for them, as has been said, how many spots they're going to have. We aren't going, we can't do that, because there's a contract. I feel like I've said this before, but.
All right. Got direction?
I think I do.
I think you do. Rock and roll. Next item, boards and commissions report, there were no meetings in August for any of them. Item eight, ordinances, resolutions, and petitions we've covered. There'll be no further business.
Mission to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Off record at seven forty-five.
I think it breaks a record.
Kevin, we'll see you, buddy.
Thank you, Ray State.
All right, take care. Have a good one.